I'd like to call this order, uh, this meeting of the Bedford County Board of Supervisors to order, and Supervisor Davis will be joining us by phone at some point, so you may hear him dial in. We would like to welcome you all here. If you have cell phones, we'd ask that you would set it on vibrate or turn them off. And if you have a hat, if you'd remove it, Mr. Barnhart. Thank you.
(laughing)
All right. So if we could take a moment of silence here before we begin. All right. If you'd stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is the actual approval of the agenda. We have one change. The public hearing for Resolution R. 0123, 23-02, has been removed. Applicant has withdrawn. So we will make that note. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if you would want to clarify for those people in the audience exactly what that was.
Okay. That public hearing that I'm referencing is the subdivision ordinance waiver request, SWR 22-0004, for SML Holdings Virginia LLC.
That one was...
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn?
Withdrawn.
All right. If there are no changes to the agenda, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Johnson first and Bensley second. All those in favor, say to five and say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and that passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before you go into further, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could we please waive the rule of no hats this evening for those of us that don't have a lot of insulation on top, because it's cold in here?
If it's a stocking cap, I'm all right. All right. The next item on our agenda is citizen comments. Each person can have up to three minutes to speak, share on anything you'd like to, unless it's a public hearing that we have on the agenda. For those who signed up, for the comments on the item that was just removed, if you would like to still share your comments, do that during this time as well. So I'm going to call the folks that signed up for the regular public comments time first, and then if, when you come up, if you'd state your name and your address for the record. So the first person we have is Mark Briers.
Good evening, Chairman. Mark Briers, 4499 Lowry Road. I do have a handout. I don't know if that's allowed, if you just pass them down, just in case I don't get to all my points. I do speak slowly. I want to talk to you about, and I believe the pronunciation is Sobris Drug Rehabilitation. They-
Mike, can I hear him?
If you'd come into the mic just a little bit more-
I sound like I was a little bit too loud. My wife would not agree. Anyway, I want to talk to you about Sobris. It's probably not a familiar name to you, maybe it is, but I want to make sure I alert you to this situation that's coming into our community, into my neighborhood. I recognize Horizon, Centra Health, Crossroads for Drug Rehabilitation. I don't recognize these people. That's because they're, the person who owns the property that they purchased for parcels around 40, 4059 Lowry Road. They, they're based out of Boca Raton, Florida.
I'd like to say one more time. Mike, can I hear the speaker?
Can everyone else hear me? Okay, how about now?
He's in Atlantic City, so you got to talk a little louder.
Yeah, yeah. He's putting the dollars in the machine. Anyway, the purchaser is out of Boca Raton, Florida. They, the parcels are zoned both AR and AV. The closest classification that I can understand in Urals terminology is a halfway house for this, for this organization. Sobris is actively advertising on the internet, the Bedford County facility that's opening soon. So they're, they're already in motion in advertising our community for a drug rehabilitation center. Early indications or early research shows that the medical personnel that are behind this organization have attempted facilities operations in Montana, Texas, that have failed. Blink Inc., the owner of the property, is associated with at least six failed Florida corporations that they've dissolved on their own way. Doesn't sound like very good business people to me. I do happen to own a business at Bedford. This, this group profiles as a scam operation by attracting and recruiting vulnerable people from outside our boundaries and charging insurance and federal money exorbitant fees with very low results. They sell, they're advertising to sell in our community a 30-day residential addiction treatment program focused, focused on substance use disorder and mental health. They identified Bedford, the Bedford facility to have up to 16 residents. Now again, AR, AV. Our communities are not structured for these types of facilities. This will place a strain on the existing wells, septics, rural roads, and law enforcement. Our, our community is not prepared to handle the influx of imported vulnerable people by this brokerage operation and discharge them into our community after they're finished. The for-profit operation of this company is focused on money and not helping people. Drug treatment, as I mentioned earlier, is available in our community. It's reputable, longstanding members of our community, Centra Health, Horizon, Crossroads, we probably all know that, and we might have all been touched a little bit by someone in our family that needed these kind of help, this kind of help. The citizens of our community are educating ourselves regarding this situation, and I wanted to alert, alert this board regarding our concerns and who is targeting our community. I ask that you investigate, take the appropriate action to protect and prepare our citizens for this threat. Please don't allow this group to profit from our community that we have built while they disregard the threat to our schools, neighborhood, children, and citizens. And one last thing I missed, and it's on the back of your page, the location is 4059, roughly, there's four parcels there. I took Google Map. It's .6 miles from Little Otter Elementary. Now is that what we want in our schools and all the news that we see coming out of Florida, Boca Raton probably, of problems at schools, people breaking in, having problems? Now we're going to put this facility, one kilometer, one kilometer from Little Otter Elementary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just make one clarification for the audience, for the speaker? That is a project that has to have special use permit, permission to do, and they've not even come and gotten that permission yet. Just, just to have that.
Thank you. And we're trying to get ahead of this, you know, and, and the thing is, it's all been under secret from us. In fact, the reason why I was alerted to it is I have adjacent property and a barn with electricity. My electricity went off. I got the final bill. My wife calls, hey, why, why is the power out? Oh, well, you don't own that property. Sorbus does. They cut the power on my barn, and so they took water away from the ability for cows to drink. So are they going to take, how much care are they going to take with humans? They don't give a darn about us. They don't give a darn about our community. They want to make money, and they want to bring people into this community, rape the insurance companies, rape the federal government, and toss them out on our streets for us to deal with. Now, drug rehabilitation, I'm all for it. We all have problems, but it doesn't have to be here. Let them start one in Boca Raton, Florida. There's a reason why they don't. You know why? The person that owns Blink, right across the street is about a $10 million property. What do you think her neighbor would say if she opened up a drug rehabilitation center on the next lot over? Her, her, her neighbors wouldn't like it at all, and she wouldn't like it either. But she'll come up here and exploit. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. Next, we have David Hardy.
Good evening. He's a neighbor. I live at 6302 Forest Road, Bedford. I have family that had joined this property. I know it hasn't come up for a special use permit yet. Don't know that they've even applied. However, they in, are in contact with Bedford County zoning, so their intent is real. Lowry Road and the T-intersection with Forest Road is a rural residential community. It's made up of families, young families, small children. There's livestock, there are horses, there are cattle. My grandson's going to go to Bedford Otter River Elementary School, and he is right. It's less than six tenths of a mile from the elementary school. Now, their proposal is to house 16 men. They are not from Bedford County. They're not even necessarily from the state of Virginia. They will pull people from outside our region and outside our state. There is no upside to Bedford County. The real estate taxes property will render to the county treasurer is insignificant to what services they may require, emergency medical services, Bedford County law enforcement. We need more sheriff's deputies. We're so understaffed in that regard, it's ridiculous. And yet we're going to add to the burden with something like this for a measly few dollars of real estate taxes? Nah. So imagine yourself being a grandfather and your grandson going off to school. Somebody who can't take it anymore decides they're going to bring an illegal gun and just run to the nearest school, bust in, and then hold somebody hostage. It's happened in Texas. It's happened in Connecticut. It's happened everywhere. And I'm sure Sheriff Miller doesn't want to have to deal with that, nor should he. But it is a possibility. Again, they haven't applied for their special use permit, but there is already facilities in this region that are approved by the state, regulated by the federal government, and watched over from health departments, none of which this facility is required. They're outside of that regard. So if and when they do get to that permit process and post their $300 advertising the Bedford bullet, bulletin, I hope that you all will just imagine living in this community with, it's nothing but rural homes, residences, with families and children. It's, it's not, it's not meant for that. And I, it, it's not zoned for it, and it's not fair to the people that already have been there and lived their whole lives there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was all that had signed up for the normal citizen comment time. Now, I have four folks that had signed up for the Nicholas Lane proposal. And if you'd like to still share with us, I'd give you that opportunity. The first one I had was Mary Kate Clime.
Hey, guys. My full name is Mary Kate Ramsey Clime. I live at 3152 Hickory Cove Lane, and I know that waiver was rescinded, but I'm sure it'll be back on, and I'll be at every meeting about it. I have some notes. I'm here as a concerned property owner regarding the special waiver requested by Rob Sorrentino. I grew up in Bedford County. I have taught in Bedford County Public Schools for 10 years, and my husband and I made a purposeful choice to raise our family in the Manita area. When we bought our home three years ago, we did our due diligence. We knew we wanted a quiet road with a few neighbors, little traffic. We purposefully chose our home knowing that across the street where these lots are, that he has brought up, we might have a few neighbors, but certainly not an entire subdivision, which is what he is requesting. SML Holdings is requesting this special waiver to reallocate those lots into 10 to build a combination of single-family homes and duplexes, or his wording has changed a lot on that, on a private road. When Mr. Sorrentino purchased these lots, he was fully aware of the standing ordinances and zoning. The desire to break apart these lots into smaller sections, develop them, and sell them for financial gain is not a hardship for him. Due to the lack of the hardship, in my opinion, he should not qualify for special treatment to receive the waiver. If you vote in favor, my family would be the ones experiencing the hardship. Our house is directly across the street from these lots that he clear-cut, and it is a wasteland, is what my husband calls it. It is heartbreaking to see every day. As a resident of Bedford County for nearly three decades, I respectfully urge you to consider my opinion. Our family home should not be affected by developers' desire to make money when the ordinances were clear when he purchased the land. They've been unclear in their written communication and communication with those in the community. I'm entirely against him receiving this waiver, but if granted, they have provided no clear plan, including road maintenance, possible short-term rentals, and how the duplexes would be maintained and marketed. The duplex Mr. Sorrentino currently owns on Hickory Cove has been poorly maintained, demonstrating a lack of his own personal investment in the area. My family would be deeply affected by the increased traffic, construction, and loss of the quiet rural life that we've worked hard to create for ourselves. This would be a true loss of the ethos upon which the neighborhood was established. I often talk with my students about how lucky they are to grow up in Bedford County and that they will always have this beautiful place to return to, no matter where they go in the world. I urge the board to uphold the current zoning policies and consider the effects to my family and the current homeowners on Nicholas Lane, Hickory Cove, and Village North. I've spoken to my neighbors in these communities, and no one I've spoken to supports the waiver request, and we share many of the same concerns. Thank you for hearing my comment, and I'll be here at every meeting this waiver is brought up about.
Thank you. All right. The next person I had signed up was Kimberly Blankenship. Okay. Then I have Sharon Mattson.
Sharon Mattson, 1407 Nicholas Lane. This is my response every time I get to speak in public. It's ridiculous, but it's me. I'm going to reserve most of my comments as well, only that there might be in the future a way to bring people that own but rent their properties into this meeting, whether it's Zoom or whatever it is, so they can speak, because they live in Arrington, they live in Metholodion. It's difficult for them to be here to speak. And I know they can email, and I know they can phone call. But I think they should have a voice, and I think a Zoom meeting would be appropriate if it could ever be accomplished. But I'm going to save my comments as well. Thank you.
All right. And then the last one I had is Bud Derry? All right. Is there anyone else here that did not sign up that would like to share anything this evening? If not, I'll close the public comments time. For the benefit of those that have come for the Hickory Cove thing, I'll, I'll share this information with you. The proposed lots are part of the Clearwater Estate subdivision and are subject to all covenants and restrictions that are in the subdivision, which calls for only single-family dwellings to be built. There would be no duplexes because of those previously established covenants.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to, we have nothing on the consent agenda tonight, and we also have no minutes ready for approval. We will move on to public hearings and presentations. The first thing we have is a presentation from the Peaks of Otter Soil and Water Conservation District, and I believe that's Tracy.
So I can just hit the little click button forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tracy Culbertson. I'm the district manager and conservation specialist with the Peaks of Otter Soil and Water Conservation District. I have with me today Terry Bowlinger. She's our administrative assistant. I have our chairman of the board, Mr. Glenn Witt, and I have our vice chairman, Mr. Richard Chafin. And I also have with us tonight Scott Baker, who is a director and Virginia Cooperative Extension Agent. And I have prepared a hopefully short presentation for you all this evening, just a little bit about who the district is and what we do here in the county. So the Peaks of Otter Soil and Water Conservation District serves Bedford County and the town of Bedford. We actually held our first board meeting in September of 1968, so we've been around for quite some time. What did I do? There we go. Sorry. The Peaks of Otter is one of the 47 conservation districts that serve the Commonwealth of Virginia. The majority of funding is initially appropriated to districts in the state budget by the General Assembly. District-specific allocations are determined by the state Soil and Water Board, and the Department of Conservation and Recreation administers those funds. Peaks of Otter receives annual funding from Bedford County and may receive funding from other sources such as grants and conservation equipment rental programs. Funding, including state and local tax dollars, are returned to the community through agricultural cost share and community educational programs. Districts are defined as political, nonpartisan subdivisions of state government. Peaks of Otter currently employs two staff members and is led by a board of directors which volunteer their time, serving without pay, to further conservation of the central county. Districts focus on conservation on a regional, individual watershed basis. Conservation districts are tasked with local implementation of state and federal cost share and tax credit programs. State programs include the Virginia Agricultural Cost Share Program and the Virginia Conservation Assistance Program. Districts also match funding for federal programs and can provide state tax credits for implementation of conservation practices where producers have out-of-pocket expenses. Fertile soil and clean water are valuable natural resources that are the focus of conservation districts. Working together with partner agencies and landowners, the districts work to design and install best management practices which help to protect and conserve our local soil and water resources. Among the many benefits of these practices are improved surface and groundwater quality, improved wildlife habitat, improved farm productivity, and reduced livestock health problems. Participation in this cost share program is completely voluntary and incentive-based. Soil erosion can lead to increased sedimentation in our waterways, which can have harmful impacts to aquatic plants, insects, amphibians, and fish. Sediment can also transport pollutants such as nutrients, heavy metals, bacteria, and pathogens downstream. Pollution of our waterways can occur from agricultural sources in several ways. A common source here in Bedford is livestock depositing waste directly in or near waterways. Nearly all of the waters in Bedford County have an impairment from bacteria and/or nutrients from agricultural and septic sources. Water pollution can result in harmful effects to our drinking water supply, recreation, fisheries, wildlife, and can also lead to increased livestock health issues. The Virginia Agricultural Cost Share Program has nearly 80 practices that address water and soil resource concerns. The most comprehensive of these is the stream exclusion with grazing land management practice. Depending on the buffer widths and lifespan, a producer can receive up to 100% cost share, and for wide-width buffers of 35 to 50 feet, the producer is also eligible for an incentive payment. This practice is the most comprehensive because its components work together to address soil and water resource concerns while also establishing pasture management through rotational grazing. Components of this practice include stream exclusion fencing that restricts access, livestock access to waterways, watering systems that establish an alternative drinking water source, stream crossings and cross fencing that facilitate rotational grazing, and the creation of riparian buffer, which is the area of natural vegetation from the edge of the stream bank out to the exclusion fence. Buffers have a number of benefits, including filtering sediment, nutrients, pesticides, and animal waste from agricultural runoff, helping to stabilize stream banks and providing wildlife habitat. Apart from administering the cost share program, the district also owns two no-chill drills that are available to users in Bedford County. Last year, over 1,400 acres of forage and cover crops were planted with the rented drills. We also aid in administering the Virginia Conservation Assistance Program, or VCAP, a program which is available to participants who are not agricultural producers. VCAP offers up to 80% reimbursement for best management practices that address issues such as erosion, poor drainage, or poor vegetation on residential, commercial, or recreational sites. Peaks of Otter also sets aside funding every year in our budget for the conservation enhancement projects, such as the ones installed at two area firehouses. It began as an idea to capture rainwater that could serve the community with the ultimate goal of conserving the use and expense of treated water. The district applied the same idea to the Bedford Area Fire Training Center in 2018. A rainwater capture project was installed there to supply water to train firefighters on drafting, which is a way to pull water from a static source such as a pond, lake, or storage tank without a pump. To conclude, the district also engages with our community as often as possible to share our mission of conservation and wise use of soil, water, and related resources. The district no longer employs an education specialist, so staff and board members have stepped up to- stepped up to devote their time and resources to this outreach. We would like to mention that the district participates in the annual competitive college scholarship program that is administered by the Virginia Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts. Our district-specific scholarship is the Adams Boone Scholarship, but there are also statewide competitive scholarships that may be available. We would love to see increased participation in this scholarship program as we have not had an applicant in many years. So, the numbers. In 2013, DCR elevated stream exclusion to a high priority practice and announced that 100% cost share will be available through the VACs program. Though no funding was currently available, if producers signed up between July 1st of 2013 and June 30th of 2015, DCR would honor their enrollment as cost share funds became available. The response from Bedford County producers was record-breaking. The end result was the completion of 116 stream exclusion practices, protecting 183 miles of stream bank and establishing 1,112 acres of riparian buffer. In total, producers were reimbursed over $9.2 million. Last program year, the district funded seven conservation practices reimbursing participants over $148,000. Funding provided by the county helps to put these cost share dollars on the ground, and we would like to thank you for your ongoing financial support. This concludes my presentation, and we have developed a website, which we haven't had in several years, and it's POSWCD.org, and we try to keep that up to date on special events, community activities, and also trainings, and availability for cost share programs. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Anyone have any questions? Yes?
I have two. When you talk about soil erosion, is, and with a lot of people now discussing the solar panels going in, is that a concern for the contamination of the water with the runoff?
I believe that one of the concerns is how to keep the area around the solar panels mowed or keep the vegetation down in order to keep the solar panels operating at full capacity. I don't know if you guys have heard anything further about the solar panels, but I don't think that's a big concern in the county at this time.
I think the issue with the air construction, depending on what you're at, for large solar facilities, solar panels, there have been instances in the state where you have some issues during construction.
Thank you, Scott.
Anyone else?
I'd like to ask the speaker a question.
Okay.
I'd like to ask the speaker her experience growing up in farming. What's her experience in agriculture, because I don't know it?
I don't per se have a background in agriculture. I did graduate from what is now the University of Lynchburg with an environmental science degree, and when I first started with the district, there was a district manager there who gave me very intense training, so it was a lot of on-the-farm experience, and I've been with the district for over seven years.
So you're saying you've actually worked on a farm and worked with livestock, and you've been out there day in, day out, you know, in the agricultural environment and conserving the soil and the land and the water?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
So I want to try to understand. You say you've actually worked for a period of time, and you've been involved in animal and farming, animal agriculture and farming for several years of your life, right?
Yes, working for the district.
So, but you've actually got hands-on experience working on a farm somewhere, right?
Not personally, no.
No, so I'd like to ask you how it makes sense to fence cattle off from riparian areas and spend $9 million, yet deer, which are not vaccinated for the diseases that are common to livestock, which farmers do vaccinate their cattle for, they can hop over those fences, get in those creeks and tributaries, and drink and pee and poop in those same tributaries that you propose to keep the cattle out, and they could sound like farmers are villains if they don't fence off their tributaries.
Well, I'd like to say that the stream exclusion practitioners are completely voluntary on behalf of the producer, and...
Well, have you ever thought about this? Have you ever talked to a farmer who's got some years of experience with these tributaries being fenced off? For instance, I remember some time ago, Mr. Baker came in requesting money to spray weeds and brushy leaves along these tributaries because they're overgrown with products much more harmful than what livestock would put into those creeks and streams if they stood in there and dragged from them and perhaps even peed in them occasionally. Products such as 240, which if you spray them on the brushy weeds along the tributaries, would also inevitably get into those streams, but yet that's okay, right?
To be used to maintain fence lines to keep them in operable condition, yes, you can spray the fence lines.
What's wrong with farmers putting fertilizer in their pastures when that fertilizer goes into the soil where it's absorbed by the grass and pulled in as nutrients to the grass and whatever plants are growing along there, but yet, that's wrong, but yet it's okay to be spraying harmful products such as 240 indiscriminately into areas around these riparian areas? I find that troubling. And furthermore, over this past very cold spell we had, when these livestock waterers that were put in place to keep the cattle out of the riparian areas, these livestock waterers froze up, and then in times of drought, they dry up, and so there's no water for the cattle either way, so then the cattle were stressed out, and this whole thing is a convoluted mess. And then for the state and the county to spend an accumulated $9 million to protect these areas, when a lot of folks, including yourself, would probably be tickled to death if there wasn't a single cow on any acre of Bedford County property, but yet if the buffalo and the moose and the elk could all run free and do the same thing, you'd be glad with it?
I wouldn't necessarily be glad because agriculture, specifically livestock operations, are a huge boost to the economy and source of income.
Well, as a man who's grown up in agriculture, who was born into farming, I take your, I'm going to finish by saying this, I take your entire presentation personally offensive to myself and farmers like myself, and I don't appreciate your comments, you come off with them sounding like we've got to keep cattle away from these streams, because most of the people in your audience who are in earshot of what you're saying tonight have no practical knowledge of agriculture and farming, and that's fine, they don't have to, but for you to come in there with absolutely zero experience on a farm, preaching to me or speaking to me and telling me information that I'd almost find amusing if it didn't make me so angry.
Yes, Richard.
I said all I want to say, thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Mr. Davis, this is Richard Chafin. I'm the vice chair of the Peaks of Otter District, and I certainly appreciate your concern and your comments. I'd just like to offer you a couple of additional comments from the district and from a state perspective as well. I just left a meeting in Richmond today at the association of districts level, and we've worked very closely with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, which is the lead agency that promotes these dollars and puts these dollars in place, and the general assembly members who approve these dollars, many of them come from farm backgrounds, as do I, and these practices are well-vetted in technical advisory committees. The value is not perfect, we understand that, but I can tell you that the improvements that have been made in various waterways, not only in Bedford County, we devoted a substantial effort to the Little Otter Project several years ago, reducing the total maximum daily loads on that watershed, and this has been done in many areas throughout the Commonwealth. We are making a difference. Can I say that the dollar is 99 cent return on investment? I can't give you those numbers, but we did, today's meeting itself, we talked about how to better quantify and come up with those things. Mr. Davis, I appreciate your concerns, and I appreciate your conscientious approach to your service on this board of supervisors. I believe in these programs, and I know many others do, and whether they come from a farm background or not, they are knowledgeable about the work that we do. I appreciate the opportunity to respond to you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, I invite any of you all to come to my farm and view for yourselves where we graze our cattle on pastures adjacent to tributaries and where our cows do in fact drink from the tributaries, and also automatic waterers that I have paid for out of my own pocket and placed in areas where I believe to be best for my cattle, which by the way are not near the tributaries. But the point of all this is, is cattle are everywhere, and while cattle are being made out to be to blame for everything from the depletion of the ozone layer and to polluting the waters, when the truth is, is I've been farming in Virginia since 1969, and throughout all my years, I've never known of any of the waters around central Virginia to be polluted by cattle. There may be some extreme examples, for instance, when a pond on a dairy may overflow by accident or something like that, which probably has happened more than once, but to refer to cattle or livestock being near or in these tributaries as being a culprit of pollution and we're spending $9 million on, I find that hard to believe, and I would like to see the spending to prove otherwise. And finally, I would say that the bigger problem, and the problems have been throughout all the years, is the overflows of the urban sewer systems into rivers such as the James River, and we hear very little about that, and very little is being done, and I find, I think it would be far more beneficial to spend those millions of dollars on working to end those problems.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you guys coming to share with us tonight. We're going to move on to our next public hearing, which is a consideration of a resolution approving a special use permit, SU22-0016 for U.S. Cellular Corporation. It's resolution R.012323-03, with presentation by senior planner Marielle Fowler.
Thank you, and good evening all. My name is Marielle Fowler, I'm with the Division of Planning, presenting special use permit application number SU22-0016. The applicant is U.S. Cellular. The property owner is Martin Design Build Incorporated. The property is RPC number 21007800. According to GIS, the parcel is 1.21 acres in size. It is located at 1089 Promised Land Road in Zone C2 with a corridor overlay district. The special use request is for a wireless communication facility Class 4. This is in Election District 2. The location map shows the property in relation to county roads. The property can be accessed from Promised Land Road, south of its intersection with Moneta Road. The zoning map shows the parcel in the C2 district with a corridor overlay on the northwestern corner. And the future land use map shows the parcel in the commercial designation. We have this recent aerial photograph that shows the parcel is developed and currently with a golf cart sales and service establishment. Surrounding uses include residential, civic, agricultural, and commercial uses mostly along Moneta Road, while some remain undeveloped. And this is the concept plan submitted by the applicant, and it shows the proposed facility. The lease area is 47 by 47 feet and can be accessed through a 30-foot-wide easement from Promised Land Road. Ground equipment will be inside a 40 by 40-feet fenced compound area, and in addition to the applicant's co-location, three additional wireless providers can also co-locate inside the compound. The proposed tower will be 195 feet tall with a four-foot-tall lightning rod for a total of 199 feet above ground level. The applicant is proposing to install a seven-foot-wide landscaping buffer yard on three sides of the compound, a total of 12 evergreen trees planted every 10 feet. They would have a height of planting of four to five feet with a height of maturity of eight to 12 feet. The application was reviewed by the county's wireless consultant, and it was determined that it conforms to all federal, state, and county regulations. There are no obvious historic or environmental impacts. Because of its height, the tower will be visible from surrounding views. The proposed landscaping plan will reduce the compound's visual impact at ground level, however, the tower will still be visible above the trees at maturity. The Planning Commission public hearing was held on January 3rd, 2023, where no citizen spoke for or against the application. They voted on a motion to recommend approval with staff conditions to the board of supervisors by a vote of 5 to 0. And here are the recommended conditions. The monopole tower associated with the wireless communication facility Class 4 use shall not exceed 195 feet in height. The monopole tower shall be maintained with a non-reflective galvanized steel finish. All general safety recommendations from the Atlantic Technology Consultants report shall be followed. Lighting a few shall be the minimum required for safety and security and shall be directed downward and away from adjacent properties and roadways. And this concludes staff's presentations. If you have any questions from the planning perspective?
Any questions for staff? Doesn't seem like there are. Does the applicant have any?
Yes, we have Ms. Emily Louter here, representing the applicant.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but I didn't hear the location where the tower is going.
It is across the, it's across the street from Moneta Farm Service on the old Tux Tire Center property.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Lauer, and Ms. Fowler did a great job at covering what all U.S. Cellular is trying to do. I just wanted to add that this is a project that we had worked on in the past, and it got postponed by U.S. Cellular, and it has been brought back due to the amount of complaints that they've had in that area with dropped calls and reception, and so I just wanted to make note that the citizens have complained to them, and they are very excited to get this tower up and going, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Mr. Chair, do you know how many, do you know how many citizens you have on U.S. Cellular in that area that you will reach?
I don't, but I could get you that answer from the engineer.
Do you know how many complaints you've had, how many people that have...
They did not relay that to me. He just said that this was a priority site that they had to get on air this year if everything passed because of the complaints.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you.
So I'll open the citizen comment portion of this. If anybody has any comments that they would like to offer for or against this tower, the citizen comment period is open now. And seeing no one jumping up to do that, I will close the citizen comment time and have discussion here with the board. Anybody have any comments?
Are you willing to entertain a motion?
I would love to entertain a motion.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve a special use permit, SU22-0016. It's resolution R.012323-03.
That's motion by Sharp. Is there a second? Second by Scott. All those in favor signify. All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that passes. All right, we move on to action and discussion items. And we have a consideration of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute, execute contracts for on-call asphalt paving, concrete, and associated services as required, which is resolution R 012323-04. Presentations by Public Works Director Doug Kaufman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Presenting for your consideration tonight, a resolution to authorize executing contracts for on-call paving and concrete services tonight. These are basically on-call services when we need a speedy response that might require us to act quickly to maintain functionality at our solid waste facility. Other county agencies or departments could also use those contracts if needed for various things. If it was an emergency paving repair, emergency concrete work for a plumbing mishap or something to that effect is essentially what the purpose of these are. We advertised them publicly, received bids, or proposals, I should say, on each of these. And Patterson Brothers Paving on the paving side and Concrete Foundations on the concrete side were our only proposers for each of these and we intend, with your blessing, to move forward with contracts on those.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
We advertised them publicly?
Yes, sir.
Or proposals on each of these?
Oh, sorry. I thought that was Bob.
Well, it's a good answer to yourself. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R 012323-04.
Sharp on the motion and the second from?
Second.
From Bensley. It's a roll call vote. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis? Did we lose him?
What is all for quite?
Mr. Davis, are you still on the line?
I think he's gone.
The line is still open. It's, so he must have hung up. So I can leave it open if he wants to call back in.
Can you hear me?
Yep, there you are.
Um, I'm terribly sorry. I didn't hear who the, can you, if you can hear me okay, if I may pause for a moment. I did not hear who the concrete contractor was.
Concrete Foundations was the concrete contractor who submitted a proposal.
Where are they from?
Uh, I, let's see here, hold on just a second.
Gretna.
Gretna.
Did you all get any other, did you get any other applicants?
No, sir. No, we reached out to other companies and encouraged bidding, but we did not receive any other applications.
Is there any, are you bound? I don't know anything about these fellows and to them I offer an apology. I don't want to sound negative toward them because I don't know anything about them, but I'm sure you probably looked into their background, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, sir.
And feel real confident about them?
Yes, sir. I think that they would do a quality job based on their reputation.
Yes, sir. Well, like I said, I've, I've been in this industry for a long, long time and I'm not familiar with some of the, that's the reason why I was asking. The last question, is there any binding contract or agreement that would, would force Bedford County, if, if something did go awry, to, to stick with them in this venture?
No, this is an on-call, contract only. We could utilize other contractors at our discretion through normal procurement measures at any time and it does not guarantee them any amount of work. This is on-call only, so only as needed.
Well then, I, Mr. Kaufman, thank you. Then I would offer a yes on this vote. Thank you all.
Thank you. And Chair votes yes. And that passes. We're on to a consideration of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute a contract for on-call welding and fabrication services, resolution R 012323-05. And Mr. Kaufman?
Similar to the on-call paving and concrete services, this is for on-call welding and fabrication services, primarily intended for the solid waste facility and any emergency welding repairs and fabrications that might be needed there where we might not have the luxury of time that it would take to design, bid, and then build the project. So it gives us some emergency repair avenues that we wouldn't otherwise have. We advertise this publicly. I believe this one, we actually advertised publicly twice trying to get applications and submissions. We received one proposal from CPT Solutions, did some research on them, and they have done work previously at the solid waste facility and the solid waste facility is pleased with what they have done to date. And we recommend, with your blessing, moving forward with the contract for them.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kaufman from the board? If not, we would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we approve resolution R 012323-05.
That's motion by Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sharp. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. And last item for Doug is consideration of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute a contract for exterior repairs to the Bedford Museum, resolution R 012323-06.
Yes. Back in September, you had authorized an advertisement for bid for exterior renovations at the Bedford Museum. It's an older building, needs a little dressing up in order to preserve the building itself as well as the contents inside of it. We advertised that for bid, postponed it once based on some requests from contractors to allow them time to do research, allow them to do additional site visits if necessary. We ended up receiving three total bids and Midwest Maintenance Incorporated was the apparent low bidder. They actually specialize in this kind of work. They have done all sorts of church renovations, historic buildings all over the East Coast and the Midwest. They are very well qualified to do this work. And we suggest with your blessing to authorize the county administrator to execute a contract with Midwest Maintenance Incorporated to do the exterior renovations to the Bedford Museum.
All right. Any questions from the board?
I got one. I assume we, the bids and everything are already covered by the budget, correct?
Yes, sir. We have set aside money for this in the CIP over the last couple of years.
Okay. Any other questions? Not, we would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to, for the approval of resolution R 012323-06, contract for exterior repairs to the Bedford Museum.
And we have a motion by Mrs. Parker, seconded by Mr. Scott. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Just to clean up something for the record, I need to back up and get a roll call on the U.S. Cellular motion, please. So if we could, for the record, state our gays or nays. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. All right. That gets us to Board Committee reports. Don't have any right now. Board comments, is there any, anyone that would like to make comment?
I just have one request. If we could start putting the social services minutes, monthly minutes, of course, they are lag behind because they have to be approved, but once they're approved, if we could just add them to our packets just for information, like we do the BRWA minutes and other things. I think it would be beneficial for the citizens to kind of know what's going on on the social service arena.
And just so everybody knows, I can start doing that right away. They also send me their minutes to post on our website. So if you go where we post the ones for the Board of Supervisors or whatever, you'll see a long list of different groups. If you click on the one for social services, all of theirs will come up for the past, I think back to the beginning of 2019.
Yeah, that is really helpful, but I know there is a lot going on with funding and changes to COVID regulations and funding right now. I think it'd be beneficial to have that.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, that gets us to the point for our closed session. So, Mr. Skelly?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would call for a motion pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1. It's a personnel matter involving appointments to the Bedford Regional Water Authority and the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Johnson on the motion. Second by?
Second.
Ms. Parker.
Voice vote is fine.
All right, all those in favor signify the same aye.
All opposed, we're in closed session.
All opposed, we're in closed session.